I call to order the special meeting of the governing board for the Scottsdale Unified School District. It is Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, and the time is 5:03 PM. I will have a roll call starting on my right.
Jan Michael Greenberg.
Sandy Kravitz.
Patty Beckman.
And Allison Beckham. Four governing board members are present, and we have a forum. Board member Pearlburg will be joining us shortly. All rise. Vice President Beckman, will you introduce us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda? I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Board member Kravitz moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board member Greenberg seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Motion carries four to zero. We move on to our information discussion items. Discussion item 4A is the second review of the capital outlay for 2020. Dr. Krieger, do you have any comments? And would you please introduce our president?
Thank you, yes. President Beckham, members of the board. This will be the second review of the capital outlay budget for 2020, 2021. Tyler is here. Tyler Moore, our accounting manager, is here and will give the second review.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Krieger. Like Dr. Krieger mentioned, this is the second review of the capital budget. We did not get much feedback from the first review, so I'm going to be rather brief through this. Not much has changed. We did make an adjustment on the bond column, which I'll explain in the presentation. So again, for fiscal year 2021, some of the capital highlights are Governor Ducey's proposal to fully restore the district additional assistance, or as we call it, the DA. This is two years ahead of schedule, and it should provide the district with an estimated 3.4 million in additional capital funding. The big highlights of our 2021 capital budget include the two-subject textbook adoption for 3.7 million. This will be phased probably with a middle and a high school and then an elementary over two fiscal years. The second bullet point there is classroom technology. We're increasing that to 6.2 million this year with the goal of reaching that one-to-one student-to-device ratio. And then the third bullet point there is increasing the maintenance fund and the district additional assistance to 1.2 million. The goal of this is to create a sustainable funding source for our capital maintenance plan as we move forward and as the bond expires. So not much has changed on these sheets. I do want to scroll through these and kind of get to the bond column explained PowerPoint. If you have any questions, please stop me. I will touch on these slides just briefly. A large portion, like is mentioned in the highlights of the technology capital budget, is for classroom technology. You can see 2.7 million being allocated for that out of the 6.2 to the next content area, which will...
Tyler, excuse me. I might elaborate just a little bit on that next content area, because when we rolled out the carts, we started with math, because it was the same as the math adoption. So we rolled it out not to whole schools, but to departments. And so the next content area, the science.
You have that for the science last year. So the next year is math.
We're doing science and math in the next year, last year and this year.
Okay, and then again, continuing with the technology. It's a network refresh. We have a UPS project. And then district software goes for about 2.2 million, and that's district-wide. So some of the main software is our financial software, Infinite Visions. Microsoft Office takes up a large portion of that budget. And then there's various school softwares that pertain to certain subject areas and et cetera. Land and building, as you know, you've approved both Cherokee, HoCom, Navajo, and then the preliminary start to Kiva. Dennis did provide a very loose estimate of 19 million, which was the basis for which the architectural fees were based off of. All those together will give you about 52 million in not true expenses, but budgeted basically, or approved expenses. And move forward. The playground equipment, this is all funded from the capital override. This is a bullet point. Greg Skelton manages this budget. He does a very good job of just maintaining or bringing up to par all our playground structures. Again, safety and security, we allocated 300,000 out of the bond going for this next year. That will be used for access control points, additional security cameras, fire alarm replacements. Furniture and equipment, the schools are allocated at about $40 per student. Capital money for expenditures such as instructional aids, furniture, basically any tangible item is considered a capital expense. The district office, we have set aside a small amount for some furniture equipment, human resource software, the new legal records retention software. The warehouse is looking at purchasing a new forklift this next coming year. And then communications has a small, again, software budget here. Transportation, we're moving forward with an increase out of the district additional assistance for transportation equipment, which includes radios and video upgrades. And then for vehicles, we're moving up the white fleet plan, two years. So if you see the second bullet point under vehicles, the white fleet vehicles are estimated at 433,000. That's for two years of vehicle replacements. So because of that, Ducey initiative to restore the capital budget, we were able to increase our white fleet basically replacement plan. Library and fine arts, a lot of this is allocated at ADM, at the ADM level, and then managed by the district curriculum personnel. We are, you'll see at the bottom there, replacing the Desert Mountain High School and Chaparral Auditorium sound and ringing issues. That was brought to our attention this year as a safety hazard, and we're allocating funds for that. I've already touched on the textbook adoption. Not going to go into much more detail on that. Curriculum has a capital override fund of about 830,000 of the 1.300,000. They use that for other supplemental textbooks that don't fall under the adopted material. So anything that falls outside of that, that money is used for that purpose. Athletics, again, is ADM-based. We push this out to the sites. So it is weighted based on a middle and high school as they have athletic programs. So they get about $18 per student. And then we have a small PE budget, that's K through 12. They get about $1.50 per student, which will help fulfill some of their small PE needs. All right, now to the bond column. So this was a question of the first review. So this is kind of explaining that bond column. So you can reference it on your page. But if you go from, if you look at the bond column, if you start at the top, you'll see the unallocated portion of 37 million. So how did we get to that number? Is we take the total bond of 229. We take our expenditures year-to-date, which is 66 million rounded. We take our estimated FY '20 expenditures and our proposed projects and plans, which are basically, a large portion of that is Cherokee, HoCom, Navajo, and then Kiva. We subtract all those from that 229, and that's how we get our 37 million in remaining bond amounts to be allocated. And then if you move down that column, you'll see 52 million, which we kind of gone over. That's your Cherokee, Navajo, Kiva, and HoCom. Those are all your estimates for that. You'll see expressed in the capital budget plan, 21 million in maintenance. This anticipates the 7 million for the next three fiscal years. So it's expressed, it's not expressed just in fiscal year '21. It's expressed in a three-year estimate, just to give you guys a better picture of that remaining authorization. Safety and security, this is the remaining authorization amount to be spent in that bullet point, per se. And we have indicated that number in the summary page. And then buses and transportation, there's 2.6 million to be spent in that bullet point out of the 6 million that was authorized. And this includes bus purchases for the next three years, so. And then on the bottom page, we have our sale amount remaining. So that's the 73 million which is left to be sold, which will then bring us to our $229 million. Now, that's kind of jumping everywhere, but I hope that helps explain that last bond column. And that was some of the feedback that we got for the first meeting, so. With that, I'll take any questions.
For the record, I'll just mention that board member Pearlburg is joining us at 5:15. Does the board have any questions?
I just wanted to clarify something. So we've allocated 1.8 million for safety and security and...
That's remaining.
That's remaining.
If you look at the bond pamphlet, there is 3 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we've spent year-to-date 1.2.
Okay, so that answers my question. So, and we're spending 300,000 this year on safety and security. So that'll drop down to 1.5 if there's...
Yep.
All right, thank you.
There's no further questions. I think we'll come back to you.
Board member Greenberg has a question.
So can you go back to the previous slide, please? So the 70 million proposed projects, plans, that's all the, those schools in there?
Yeah.
That's listed below.
Correct.
And then, plus, on the next page, these expenditures. So the total of those expenditures, I guess I should say, so the 21 million, the 1.8 million, that all adds up to the 78 million?
Correct.
And then there's still, after all of that, 37 million left over?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
So that would give you a good idea of what you have left to possibly do, another school. Because we did expense out the maintenance plan for three additional years, so. And the safety and security and the buses.
Which I appreciate.
Thank you. Okay, I think on April 4th, we will come back for our final approval for the capital budget.
That'll be April 4th?
Yeah.
Be the final approval, it'll be an action item?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to discussion item 4B, first read of proposed revisions to policy GBEV, staff conduct, GBEC, drug-free workplace, GBEV, smoking by staff members, GCF, professional staff hiring, and GDF, support staff. Dr. Krieger, do you have any comments? Would you like to introduce your president?
No, this is the next in our series of trying to go through the policy manual and upgrade, upgrade the policies, bring them up to speed, so. Ms. Marshall is ready and raring to go.
Sorry, I think someone was trying to help me back there. Madam President, members of the board. As you stated, we have some Section G personnel policies for your consideration on first read this evening. I provided you a brief background memo to describe the proposed changes, and I'll run through these for our audience and take any questions you might have. Please feel free to interrupt me as we go. The first policy is called staff conduct, and I have it here on the screen for you. The changes up here are fixing the enumeration of the paragraphs and then adding in language from statute about reporting that we are required to do with respect to conduct that poses a threat or serious physical injury, as well as bullying, referencing our bullying policy, JICK, and the statute regarding bullying. Notifications to parents, you'll see in this language. And then it talked, there is a date in here that has just passed, January 1, 2020, that we shall post policies and procedures regarding reporting suspected crimes or incidents. We do have these policies and procedures in place in the district. Our policy, this policy just needs to catch up with what we are already doing.
Does anybody have any specific questions on this particular policy?
Yes.
Board member Greenberg.
Just out of curiosity, because at the top, it references the school district and/or charter school.
Yes.
Do we have to leave those in there?
No, we can, we can remove charter. It's the way the statute is written.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if that's, okay.
That's actually, we can do that, because it doesn't apply to us, as you pointed out.
Board member Kravitz.
Recently, there was an article circulating in the paper about inappropriate conduct between, not at our district, in another district, between a teacher or alleged conduct, between a teacher and a student, and that there were rumors in the school that this was going on and nobody reported it. So under this policy, would a teacher, if somebody knew, heard a rumor, and again, just a rumor, would they be compelled to report that?
So this policy is more about the district's responsibility to report, but to your point, any employee of the district, which includes teachers, is required to report suspected abuse or neglect. When it involves an allegation against a certificated staff member, then we have extra reporting that we do to ADE, the Department of Ed, who is in charge of certifications.
Thank you. Anything else on this policy?
As a follow-up, so if a teacher reports it to district, then district, under this policy, reports it to ADE or the authorities if it's...
So there are some administrative code regulations that dictate when we are required to report on a teacher's certificate. And that is, that would include allegations of inappropriate conduct with minors. So we don't have a choice in that matter. We do still follow due process and investigate and give the teacher an opportunity to respond to such allegations, but we do report to ADE, yeah.
And when it involves a minor, we are compelled to report that to the authorities?
Yes, we report to ADE, DCS, and the police when that's an allegation that we've received.
Okay, board member Beckman.
Because things are evolving, and we obviously read about instances, what is the timeframe on that reporting? I know that there has been issues before when a district, say, some district somewhere else takes their time in reporting something, so there's this kind of period where someone could go somewhere else and it hasn't been reported. Can you speak to that?
So child abuse reporting is immediately. There used to be a rule about written follow-up within three days, but it's basically immediately. The delays, I think you're referencing, are in the investigative stage. In Arizona, as in other states, the investigative units sometimes lag, and we don't necessarily get information in a timely manner. But we report immediately, and we have a regular check on our employees regarding fingerprint clearance and those kinds of things. So we are supposed to get reports promptly. It doesn't always work that way, but on our end, we're reporting immediately as soon as we receive an allegation like that. Did that answer your question?
It did. I was just, I had another question about the certification then, as far as, how often do we check back on that certification?
Do you know the answer to that, Dr. Bowman? How often?
Well, it's ADE's responsibility to certify.
Right.
And we track when they're up for renewal, but we don't go and validate their certificate in the sense that if ADE validates it, then we work with ADE that that's an acceptable certificate.
certificate.
But on fingerprint clearance.
We are notified, annually, we report to ADE on all of our teachers, what they are teaching, where they are teaching, and so forth. If someone is under investigation by them, they, that comes back to us in form of a check or something that, that, then we have to follow up on to find out what is going on. But there is a process, if they are investigating and we didn't know about it, that we could find out through that, the return on that report. Our report is due in October.
That's correct.
We might not hear back till January or February by the time they go through. But that is another catch. In most cases, in my experience, if something's going on with a teacher, we learn about it before that comes back from the ADE. But not in all cases if, if, as we know, from, from one case this year, that there was lack of communication between two different states, and then some information was not acted upon formally.
Okay. Board Member Greenberg.
So if I understand correctly, if, if an allegation is made to the district, the district immediately reports it without any investigative steps, that isn't the district's responsibility? It's just the district's responsibility to report it?
We report the allegation to ADE. We will then also do the investigation and determine, and also keep ADE apprised of what's happening. If we, for instance, were to get that kind of an allegation and conclude that there wasn't an issue, we would follow up with ADE and tell them that.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Okay. Next. The next policy I have for your consideration is GBEC, which is called Drug-Free Workplace. The update to this, you'll see, is to align with the ASBA policy as well as statute. The red language that you see lined out is what is currently in district policy that we're recommending taking out. And you'll see that that includes, or should include, I'm looking for it right now, this language here, that if an employee is formally charged by legal authorities with any drug-related felony or misdemeanor, that is being, or we're recommending changing that to conviction. That's consistent with the statute and fair as far as due process. Someone charged isn't, is innocent until proven guilty, so that just reflects that in this policy. If there aren't any-
I have a question on it. Just clarification, then, would the employee be put on leave during that time?
If they're formally charged, if they're convicted?
Yes, if they're charged.
If they're charged. I think the charge depends on the offense and what we know about the allegations. If it's a serious allegation about conduct with minors, if it's certain sexual offenses which carry a higher penalty, then we would, both for the protection of students as well as the protection of the employee, want to remove them from the workplace, put them on leave while we investigate, figure out what's going on. It really, for those employees who are not guilty of those offenses, it does help protect them, to take them out of that situation, so that no further allegations can be made regarding conduct with minors. And we work to try to quickly investigate and, and resolve the matter to our satisfaction.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. The next one I have is GBEV, which is smoking by staff members. And this is a pretty simple change. I'm sorry, I thought, this, this may not be the red line. The change is to add this reference to vapor products, to vapes, that was not in our policy. I'm sorry, this isn't, this doesn't appear to be the red line, but that language that I highlighted there is the revision that we are presenting for you. I don't know how I got the wrong one. My apologies. And that's the only change to this one, is to reference, kind of get with the times and reference vaping. Finally, we have-
Any questions?
Two more policies, professional staff hiring as well as support staff hiring. And both of those, that's GCF and GDF. I see, I clicked on final. There's the red line. GCF is professional staff. And again, the red lined out is what's in our current policy that we are recommending removing, and the blue is what we are recommending adding. Candidates for professional positions shall be qualified for and have the training necessary to perform the instructional duties or functions for which they have applied. And then the statute that was updated talks about being able to share information that comes up in a background investigation with other, other employers. We can retain those records and share them with other school employers if, if they request or if we feel that child health and safety is at issue. So that change is the main one that's recommended to professional staff hiring. And I have a similar addition for support staff hiring.
One more question.
Yes, sorry.
So Michelle, just a quick question. Could you go back to that paragraph where it said able to share?
Yes.
I just was curious, because when I read it earlier, and maybe this is different, it didn't say share with whom or where or whatever, it just said able to share. And I was like, okay, share?
That they were disciplined for violating policies of the district governing board pursuant to the statute. Maybe we can retain the records and we may provide to, I use the word share, provide to any school district or other public school that is performing a background check.
So this will be in there, provide to now instead of share?
Yes, I, I said share. That was me improvising.
Board Member Greenberg.
This might actually be more of a question for Dr. Bowman, but out of curiosity, with point A, there will be no discrimination in the hiring process. In our hiring process, when we initially screen applicant, applications, do we block out the applicant's name to avoid, I mean, it's a common practice now to avoid gender discrimination or the, or race discrimination, just out of curiosity?
I don't believe we do. I know that a lot of our processes for screening are looking for minimum qualifications if they do a paper screen before an interview process. But no, I'm not aware of anybody doing that with names or that kind of stuff.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Board Member Kravitz.
Thank you. So going back to the red line, the candidate for secondary school teaching, so we're taking out, should have a major minor equivalent in the candidate's teaching field for secondary. Is that change just solely because of our teacher shortage? Or is, are there other factors? Or is that not even a factor of why that language would change?
You know, I don't know that it's required. I don't, I don't know that the major minor or equivalent in the specific subject area is required.
Are we having trouble staffing with that?
It certainly wasn't a discussion. It was comparing this policy to the ASBA, and this wasn't consistent. We didn't have a discussion about-
So there's no big need meeting behind it, basically?
No.
Because obviously, they could still have that-
Oh, absolutely.
Under this new policy. That's not a question. I just wonder why we were trying to make it more generic, because it- Maybe some people, oh, Mike, pardon. Some people, you know, they have, teaching could be a second, you know, career for them, so maybe they go back to, so they wouldn't necessarily have a bachelor's in education, but if they've gone back-
I think the posting for whatever specific position we're looking for would say what the qualifications are. So if that was what was preferred or required, it would say so in the posting. It doesn't need to be in the policy. And again, it wasn't an intentional, you know, let's stop requiring this discussion. It was compare the policy to the model, look at the statute, and remain consistent.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you. Any other questions? Board Member Cravitz.
Oh, I just have a question in the last paragraph.
Yes.
Where it says a professional candidate's acceptance of a contract offer must be indicated within 15 days. Some places, we say 15 business days, and other places not, so I didn't, I just wanted to make sure we're consistent, or if this is special.
Yes, and, and you're right, we, we do 15 business days, so for instance, we wouldn't count, count spring break as part of a teacher's time to consider their contract and return it. I didn't get a chance to check the statute, but my recollection is it just says 15 days.
15, okay.
We can certainly add that clarification if the board is interested in adding that. I like to stick with the statutory language where possible. How about this, could I confirm that and let you all know that whether this is consistent with the statutory language? I'll do that.
So Ms. Marshall, if we, if it does change and it is statutory to be 15 days, not 15 business days, that means we will be changing our procedures?
No, I think that we, I think teachers expect 15 business days, and we've always given 15 business days. It's just, it, it may have been out of an abundance of caution to make sure that we're giving them the full time that they have to consider. Later, elsewhere in the statute, for instance, as Dr. Bowman reminded me earlier today, psychs, psychologists have 30 days to return theirs, and that is not business days, it's calendar days.
I would just say, I would want our policy to be specific of what we actually do, unless we have, then, if it's broad in our policy and then we have a written procedure that says what it is, otherwise, we're going to have confusion and people are, right?
So what we, what we normally do with the ASBA policies is we do what is required in the law, and then we can do extra. So if the law requires 15 days, and it is our practice and teacher's expectation that it be 15 business days, that's an extra that we're doing because we can, and it's not against the law, which is why I would like to see what the statute says.
I would just like what we do written somewhere, so our-
Absolutely.
-staff understands what it is. I don't want somebody to say that I read the policy and it's 15 in my-
Right, and I wonder if that isn't in our certified handbook?
Staff member took five extra days.
Yes, we can also look at what's in the handbook.
Board Member Greenberg.
I agree, and also, as days might, will probably be defined by the statute, so we'll know, but 15, that, how, as written, that's the minimum amount of time we could give somebody, there is, yeah, so.
So I will follow up with you on that before I run it back.
I had one more question that, when you were talking, can you go back? Oh, no, no. Scrolling, I think it was B.
Okay.
B here? No, it was on the last contract, maybe. It, it was the part-
Oh, previous page?
Previous page, there.
Okay.
Okay, under B. So this is added, this had this language that wasn't in there before. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what is our actual practice? We hire somebody, we find out they do not have the qualified skills that we thought we were hiring them for. What is our practice and what do we do when we find that out?
So-
Do we have a probationary period of 90 days? So if we find out in that 90 days, we can just say, it didn't work out, you don't have the skills we need?
So remember, this is teachers. This one is professional staff. And we have to follow, a lot of, there's, the most protection in statute is for teachers, as it should be. And we have to follow whatever procedure they fall under, if they're a probationary teacher, if they're a continuing teacher, if we're looking at unprofessional conduct, or are we looking at inadequate performance? So it would depend on what the issue is, and there's no 90-day probation.
But I'm not talking about either of those. I'm talking about if we find out that they actually don't have the skills, because it says they qualify, let's, whatever that skill is, they just don't have. What do we do in that?
Are you talking about a, a falsified certificate information? Or they don't have the diploma they said they had?
So, so for-
As I read this, it would tell me.
Yeah, let me, let me try to help. So we say, we expect a teacher to be able to manage a classroom. And in the first two weeks of school, the principal goes in and sees that the kids are out of control, the teacher doesn't have that skill. As, the teacher is a probationary teacher, but it's a three-year probationary period. But during that time, we, we can go through the required steps, which are fewer than a continuing teacher, and start out with remediation and help, but eventually, we could declare the teacher inadequate and, and terminate. And that is an easier process, fewer steps, as I said, to follow than a continuing teacher, but you can. But, but it is not, it is not like, it's not like an hourly person who comes in and, and might have 90 days as a probationary period in, in many businesses and so forth. It is not like that. If, if we find out that a teacher has absolutely nothing that he or she said they had in the interview and so forth, then, and there's nothing going in the classroom, we would take immediate steps and get through those, those procedures right away. But it's not as clear-cut as a, as I said, as a 90-day probationary period.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, and then the last one that I have for you is regarding support staff hiring, policy GDF. I can't put the right version here. And similar to what we had, what we are recommending adding under professional staff hiring, this comes from the same statute, that information obtained about an employee or applicant by the districts, district when we're performing a background investigation, including discipline for violating governing board policies, can be retained by the district and can be provided to any other school district that's performing a background check on that Any questions on that? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Before I leave, shall I bring these back on consent and let the board know about the two, the two notes that I took care of? Okay, I will do that.
With that, we'll move on to consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Sue.
Vice President Beckham? Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Cravitz, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. I guess we'll move on to action items. Action item 6A, issuance and sale of refunding bonds, 2010, bond series amount does not exceed $2,500,000. Dr. Preakert, do you have any comments?
No, there's been information that went out, and thank you, President Beckham, for sitting through a question and answer period and, and providing insight for all of the board members. And I think with that, Tyler Moore is, is back to present this and answer questions, and also, if necessary, introduce guests that we have who can help out with answers.
Good evening again, Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Preakert. We're bringing you today for approval the refunding of the 2010 bond issuance. Based on some conservative estimates from the current market interest rate, the district could realize approximate savings of 1.25 million in present value savings with this tax-exempt refunding. With that, I mean, we're going to ask for approval. If you have any questions, we have both Piper Sandler here to respond, and our underwriters with Steve, so.
Board Member S- Board Member Sandler.
Vice President Beckman.
Just a quick, easy question. So what was the yield of the bonds that we are potentially refunding? Do we know?
Five.
Five.
All right.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Krieger. The interest rate on the 2010 bonds, they were at a 5% coupon interest rate.
And what is your conservative estimate for the interest rate? That April, I assume?
In April is when we'll close, correct? We're at like a 1.35% right now, like 1.35%.
Oh, okay, great.
So pretty low.
Do we know the term we would potentially go out for if we do?
So do you have the presentation in front of you? Do you have this in print?
Oh, what is that?
The board book. I'm sorry. So the 2010 bonds have a final maturity of 2024.
Right.
We would have the same final maturity.
Oh, okay.
Do you, do you a three-year, not a 1%?
Okay.
Can, I'm sorry, but can you just give your name for the-
Hi, Megan Burke with Piper Sandler.
Thank you.
Board Member Greenberg.
Just, I think what our board vice president is getting at is some pandemics can be useful.
Today it might have changed.
And it actually lowered by, I think they're lowering it one to 1.25 percent, it's about 50 basis points. Definitely worthwhile for us to do this.
Those numbers were ran before the Fed news today, too, so the savings will be-
That's, yes, correct. But these are higher.
Correct.
And that's the point. In April, when we go out, we won't know what that rate is until that day.
Correct. And as Tyler mentioned, the savings, when we, when we ran the numbers, was like 1.25 million. We expect it to be much more. In your resolution, we say that the savings will be in excess of a million, but, you know, we're well, we're well about that right now.
I'm sorry, if you could just repeat the net amount that we'll be saving for taxpayers.
A million.
Speak into the microphone.
1,265,000.
Thank you very much.
And that's net of costs?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion to approve action item 6A as presented? So moved. Board Member Kravitz moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Greenberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. We'll move on to action item 6B, tentative approval of the MNO budget for the 2020-21 school year. Dr. Krieger, do we have any comments?
Thank you. President Beckham, members of the board, this is after, how many reviews? Have we have three?
I think this is our third one now.
Third review, asking for tentative approval of next year's MNO budget. There is going to be very similar to what you've seen with maybe just a couple of small changes. So Shannon Crozier, Director of Finance, is, is here to present.
Good evening, Board, Madam Board President, members of the board, Dr. Krieger. We did make a few changes today from what was originally sent out last week in the board packet. So there's a couple of changes that I think you'll be happy with.
Actually, I changed it on board.
Okay. So if you looked at it before this afternoon, it'll be slightly different in a couple areas. The assumptions that we're looking at are basically the same ones that we've looked at for all of them. It's the estimated ADM loss of 275, I'm sorry, yes, 275. Inflation factor of 1.89. Budget balance carry forward stays the same as what we've had for the last few years. This is the last year of the 5% DUCI money for additional teacher salaries. And then the state retirement increase, it's about $114,000, but it'll go up 0.11. That'll actually affect our employees as well. It's the same percent for the district as well as employees. And then this is assuming that nothing detrimental happens between now and when the state actually finalizes everything, hopefully sometime in May, if not earlier. But this just kind of assumes that nothing abnormal happens between now and then. We don't need to continue to use the cash-controlled accounts for next year. We'll continue with the 2 million that we put in for this year, but we won't be adding any additional fund, or any additional expenses to the cash control accounts. It assigns the 2.7 million for capital that we want to assign this year, and we'll assign that back to the MNO fund. And then it takes, we've got additional $500,000 from Prop 123. And so to, to make things look better, to work for in the future, we decided it would be good to move 500, that additional $500,000 from MNO over to capital. That will help us out when we do our 2223, but, no, 2122 budget. And then the last part of that is no increase for insurance premiums to the employee. The district will absorb that through the trust. This just kind of looks at where that puts us. 170, we anticipate 174 million for the general budget limit for next year. Our anticipated budget for this year will be 165. That's what they'd move to, from MNO to capital. And that leaves us with a budget difference of $8.4 million. That's no different than anything we've looked at before. Same with this slide. We've got the program increases of $320,000, contracted custodial increase of about 200,000, SROs increase about 100,000, and then a small increase for our utilities at 94,000. This is new. This is the program increases that we looked at for that $320,000. This was discussed in cabinet as to how would be, how we, could we best spend that $320,000. So 8,000 of that would be for Avid tutors. We started an Avid program this year, and so that would go for that. 6,900 is for some increases each year. There's increases within the middle years programs for the IB that we're starting up at the middle school. So there's a small increase for that. Elementary sub coverage compensation right now, and I might have to ask Dr. Hagen at Burke help on this, but right now, if we can't fill a classroom with a sub, when the teacher's out at the high school levels, they'll cover, they'll cover that with prep. This would be for the elementary level where they don't necessarily have a prep hour. So-
Hang tight, hang tight.
Oh, okay.
Everyone has a prep hour. What we're looking at here is if the teacher is covering during their prep time, students at the time, because somebody else is out at this time in elementary, there is no compensation. And so we know that it happens at secondary, but we don't have it at elementary. So we're looking for ways to make sure that it's equitable across our district.
And then there's some additional FTE that's put in there, additional FTE for Desert Canyon Elementary for the Manjin program, additional FTE for Kiva in a multi-age program, CGP third grade at Hopee has an additional FTE, ninth grade enrollment at Suoro in Spanish Capstone, additional FTE. And then at the Math and Science Academy at Suoro, this would be moving a certified person who's doing that to more of an administrator-type position. So those are the programming-
And the reason, I might say, excuse me, Shannon.
Yeah.
Board Member Kravitz raised this question today, and it's worthy, so that everybody understands. The reason that's split between the .2 and the .6 for one position is because the .2 is actually teaching the robotics course. We would see that, that person to continue to be teaching the robotics as part of the assignment. So it's split between a certified and a coordinator position.
This next slide is also a new one. At the last board meeting, when we talked about the increases for the different employee categories, the question was asked as to how much were we looking at for each employee group for the one, three, and five. I've done this, looking at the 5%, but you can see each, each category in there. So the 5% certified would be 4.3 million, classified would be 1.4, and administration would be 645,000. That chart is looking at, of the $6.4 million that it would cost to do 5% raise across the board, 68% of that would go to certified, 22 to classified, and 10% to admin. That gives you the breakdown from each of those areas and those percentages, but we did it as 5% because that's what we've been recommending. And then the other big change is on this summary page, and the big change you'll see here versus what you might have seen this weekend or earlier looking at it, is originally we had a teacher contingency for $380,000 in there. Based off of feedback that we've received, we decided that it would be prudent to take that five teacher contingency out and move that to additional guidance social work, guidance counselor, social workers. So we originally had for five additional, and that was about 380 as well. And so we, instead of having teacher contingency, we've moved that into the additional social workers and guidance counselors to increase that budget as well. And I think you wanted to-
Thank you. So this was, this came from discussions that we've had with various groups, and certainly heard you as board members asking for more help in the counseling services. So as you saw in the previous presentation at the last board meeting, we had, we had an increase in money for, that we arrived at by lowering the student to counselor ratio, but with the understanding that that $383,000, what it was, would be used based on school need. So it may be counselors, it may be other social workers. Then, then because we, a grant that we have had five social workers on, in the grant, oh, three, that's right, I'm sorry. We had three social workers on a grant that runs out this year. We didn't want to see that position go. And in fact, we had two schools, Tonali and Coronado, were selected by the state for a social worker. So we said, how do we get, keep the social workers that we had, increase the services? And so we combined the contingency that we had for certified with the 383 that we had already shown, and that's $763,000 for additional people in social work, guidance counselor area. We believe that this is a major commitment when seeing what neighboring districts are doing in this area. Again, I keep harping on the Hanover Climate Survey. If you remember, that's one of the primary areas. Four of the five recommendations had to do with SEL-related things, and it is an area that we believe needs to be addressed. And it also, in our negotiations, our, which is probably not a too strong a word, our discussions with the Charos, the Charos Foundation, and what they are going to, they want to know what is it that we are committing as a district? So we're not just taking from them, but it truly is a partnership. And I think in our last meeting with the Charos group, they were very impressed with this kind of a number. And this is not all of what we were doing. Obviously, there are a lot of little pieces around in the testing we're doing, the training we're doing, and PBIS and so forth. And, but this, this number for next year's budget is a new commitment towards this area.
Vice President Beckman.
So should this get approved? When the money is actually used, if it's approved, is there any way that next year or whatever, we can see actually how this is allocated? You know, you said it's going to be, it would be interesting to see-
It would be, it would be July, it would be a summer thing, so that when school started, we would have people, our design would be to have people in place.
It would be a really informative and valuable illustration to see where we were and where we are now with these additional funds. And I know our community groups would like to see that, too, so.
I believe Dr. Zachos has already worked on that table. It'd be upgraded as we are hiring the people for it.
Board Member Kravitz. I just want to be clear. So each school in grade six through 12, so if it's a K8, the six through eight, or, or middle schools through high schools, will each get either an additional social worker or guidance counselor, depending on-
They will, they will get an-
Discussions on that campus of what the need is.
They will get, they will get an allocation based on their current use. We have, we have some schools that are actually below the number that we use to come up with that right now.
I think our ratio is like around 450 to 1 in comparison to the state average of 900.
But schools such as Coronado is much lower than that. They're below the 375. So, and in our initial discussions with a couple of the counseling departments, we would be eligible for a .3 or a .2. We don't, that's not useful to us. Could we use that money for some other kinds of counseling services? And so those discussions, once this is approved, will take place this spring for next year.
And we foresee this money being sustainable, so it's not, we're giving this year and taking away next year, two years from now.
Yes, this is not one-time funds. This is, this is MNO budget fund.
I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
So we'll move on to, this next slide is also, was there a question? This next slide is another slide we took a look at. And what it looks at is of the 8.4 million that we have in additional funds, and it's been tweaked a little bit from what it was originally sent out, but, but with the 8.4 million we, we have in additional funds, or anticipate in additional funds, certified salaries at 4.3 million, if we did the 5%, would equate to 52% more for, 52% of the 8.4 certified salaries, 17% would be classified salaries, and then the guidance social workers representing 9%. So that went up, basically moved, moved up quite a bit from, from what was originally for guidance counselors. And then that puts the administrative salaries at 8%, contingencies at 5, as well as contracted, and utility increases at 5, and programs at 4%. So we try to make sure that of the additional dollars we have, that we're putting, we're maximizing that to get as much as we can into the classroom. And I think there was a question, Ms. Beckman had a question earlier on how that affects on the AG's report when they do our dollars in the classroom. Yes, we're, if we, if you approved to increase administrative salaries, we're also increasing our instructional money into the classroom, 5% as well as other areas. And so there's a balance that ends up happening with that. So it's not like if we, if you approve 5% admin increases, that we're now going to go up 5% in admin costs on the AG's report. There's an equal lay, equaling out because we're putting even more money into the classroom that has to bring that down. So it's not like admin costs are going to go up 5% based off of, of any decision that's made.
Well, thanks for addressing that, because I know a lot of our community members do pull up this audit general report. And I just, you know, wanted you to articulate that we do keep our eye on that targeted percentage. I know our goal is to get the money to the classroom, and right now in 2018, you know, we have another one coming out soon, we had 9.4%-
Yes.
-of administration.
And our goal, our goal is obviously to get that 9.4 down. One of the things that we do in our accounting office is when we're looking at closing out the year, we're working on our AFR, one of the things we do is, okay, of our expenditures, where things are at, how are we looking? So we have a little bit of an idea beforehand. So when we get that report, nothing should be, unless, unless we calculated way differently than they did, there shouldn't be a huge surprise. So we are aware of, of looking at that to make sure that, and when they go off of that, they're going off of expenditures. We don't really know until the end of the year where things are going to end up. But we do look at those expenditures and where do we believe they're going to be classified at, and, and making sure that there's nothing that looks really different than it has in the past, or that's really, unless it's raising classroom. But we do look to, look at it to make sure that there's nothing that looks really quite off with it.
Well, thank you for saying that, because as a board, I know I speak for myself here, but we trust that you do that-
Yes.
-because we don't want to find out from our community members, et cetera, that there was something that was, you know, significantly different than the previous year, et cetera. So thank you.
So we are trying to keep our eye on that, because we don't want to be surprised either.
So I have a question. It's more just a clarification, because you brought up the point in that when I was asking about what additional staffing do we have for our students? And Dr. Krieger, you brought up that we have more APs in our elementary, and those APs are classified as administration, right?
Yes.
Even though they're directly working with the students?
Yes.
So you also have to understand individually, when you look at that AG, that each school might have something that is actually not defined as instructional, yet it truly, there, a lot of work they do is with the students.
Absolutely. And that's one of the things that we know will bump our admin cost up is because we choose- is because we choose to have additional support on the, on the school campuses for those reasons.
I'd like to add into that. When, when I arrived here in, I don't know, 1.75 years ago, we had dean of students at elementary schools that weren't really truly deans of students. They were administrators that had a title of dean of students. So one of the changes that we, we made, recognizing there would be an impact on the admin, was they were required to have the admin certificate. They were, they were supervising and evaluating staff. So we, we eliminated or abolished the dean of students and, and honored the, having an AP at our elementary schools. I just wanted to, I don't know, not all the board members were here for that, but I, I thought that was a really wonderful thing that we were able to do for the schools and for the principals of those schools and for those communities.
Thank you. So with that, just looking at kind of what we presented is if approved, that would provide a 5% increase for all employee groups. There's no additional benefit cost to employees that will stay at the, stay at the current level of what it is. No additional contributions from cash-controlled accounts for next year. Additional social worker, guidance counselors that'll help lower those counseling ratios. And then we also have a contingency in there if there's student loss. And hopefully, we won't have to use that, we'll be able to use that contingency for teachers, hopefully, instead of student loss. Oh, yes.
I would like to also just point out that there is an additional benefit to our employees. And as that is, is that the district is paying that 6%, estimated 6% cost on-
Yes.
-medical care, which would normally go to them. And it would go straight against their big old pay. And so, and it is something that, you know, we were not going to be able to do forever. And so at some point, the employee probably will have to start paying.
Absolutely.
But the last two years, we, the district has been able to do that.
Yeah, we've been fortunate. We have a really high balance in the trust for employee benefits. And so we've been using that trust to absorb those additional costs. That's something we're able to do now and hopefully for a few more years. But that's not something that-
It's not sustainable.
That's not sustainable in there. So at some point, yes, those costs will have to be absorbed by the employee. And this just kind of goes over, I mean, what we've, we've looked at it a couple of times. We're looking at it again tonight. The tentative approval would be so that we can get things loaded in with salaries being the biggest bulk of our budget. This would be so that we can get things out, we can get teacher contracts out. And I know that Dr. Bowman's going to be talking about salary schedules here in a little bit. But the tentative approval just basically makes it so we can get things set and ready to go and start getting, getting set up for next year. We will come back, as Tyler mentioned, we're going to do the capital budgets again for tentative approval on the 7th. On June 9th, we will come back to the board for the proposed budget for advertisement. So that will be, at that point, we should know what the state is going to do. That should be finalized. And we'll have the definite numbers at that point. And then on June 23rd, we'll do the public hearing. And that would be the final adoption of the 2021 budget. And we did, we did meet with our community groups. We met with the parents on January 30th. We met with community members on February 27th. I think we had some great feedback from that. And both of those have been, you know, have been interesting to hear what people are asking for.
Are you, are we going to get some information on the feedback?
Um, I can, I can put that together.
Interesting to see what they said.
Yes. I can tell you, some of the feedback we received, obviously, was the teacher salaries. We did, at the last meeting, we had a comment that it was really important for certi-, I'm sorry, for classified salaries and that they felt that that was really important. But I'll put together a list of all of the things that were discussed in both of those meetings and, and get that. But it really, I think, focused around classified, certified salaries and, and what can we do to get positions filled. With that, are there any other questions?
Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Do you have a motion to approve Action Item 6B? Approval, tentative approval of MNO budget for 2020-21 school year.
So move.
Board Member Greenberg moves. Do I have a second? Vice President Beckman, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Action Item 6C, approval of employee contract forms. Dr. Creekard, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, not really. This is, again, Ms. Marshall's area, working alongside the HR staff. And, and last year, there was quite a bit of work that was done on, on the, on the contracts. I'm stealing some of Chelsea's thunder, I'm sure. This year, because of that work, less had to be done to revise it. But there are, there are a couple of small changes.
Thank you, Dr. Creekard, Madam President, members of the board. As Dr. Creekard said, most of the heavy lifting on cleaning up our contract forms occurred last year with lots of discussion with employee groups and between legal and HR and trying to make sure we have the right versions and payroll. And thank you to Lindy and to Kim Davis in payroll and benefits. They are hidden gems in this district who are my go-to when I need to figure out, how does that accrue and how do we pay this? So I just wanted to give a shout out to them. So I provided you with a brief memo describing the few changes that we're recommending to the forms this year. The first one I have pulled up is the certified teacher contract. In general, we have the same forms that you approved last year. There are nine basic forms. The certified teacher, the certified teacher terminating contract, the special-
Which, which, so people understand, listening, it's not somebody who we are terminating. We give them a contract. It is, it is somebody whose contract will terminate at the end of the year. They're given for a specific amount of time, usually when they're hired with, what, one day less than half of the year?
No, we changed that. Amy E., what's the date? Do you know?
Terminating contract?
It's, it's the first week. First day after the start of school.
So the terminate, the terminating contract essentially is for less than a year. And the teacher knows upfront that it's not a full school year. They're starting after the beginning of the school year. So that's the form we use for that. I have a question.
Vice President Beckman.
You guys, might be able to refresh my memory. Did, we had a little tiny clip in the certified teacher contract last year, if I recall? And did we fix that?
I'm not recalling.
I just remember something had to be corrected.
I am not recalling that.
Okay.
I, I'd have to review it. I just don't recall that.
Okay. I trust that it's-
So just again, the overview of what I'm providing to you is certified teacher, the terminating contract for less than a year for teachers. Special service providers, which would be your occupational therapist, SL, uh, sorry, trying not to use all the, all the speech, speech and language pathologists and other special service providers. A notice of classified appointment for our classified employees to let them know that we are intending to employ them for the fall, for the coming year. The classified administrator, any administrator who is not a certified administrator. Certified administrator 12-month. We have a separate form for nine and a half and 11-month certified administrators. And then a form for cabinet-level administrators. And then finally, a supplemental pay contract, addendum to contract, that is called. So generally speaking, for those employees to which it applies, which is all except for the classified hourly employees, we are recommending adding- Sorry, I must have passed it here. Where is it hiding? We, we are recommending adding language that if eligible, the governing board can agree to pay additional pay. I'm sorry, I'm not finding it in this-
It's section six.
Thank you.
I think you read there. Is that where you're talking about supplemental pay?
Thank you, yes. I went right by it, thank you. Board Member Greenberg. So this supplemental pay, sub-paragraph B to paragraph six. In the teacher's contract, it looks like this. "If eligible, teachers shall receive supplemental pay stipends or additional pay as expressly authorized by the governing board pursuant to governing board policy or specific board action." We have similar clauses in all the other administrator contracts and non-hourly employee contracts. And that language is recommended because of some issues that we saw in the news in other districts this year and recently where administratively, people had authorized extra pay for employees, but they hadn't brought it to the board and it's, to have the board approve it. The board, in both of those cases that I'm talking about, either didn't, didn't know about it and didn't approve it on an agenda. And so we're recommending adding that to all the applicable employee contracts. Just, one, to remind the employee that extra pay is supposed to be approved by the board. And two, just for our, your protection as the employer.
We're remembering that.
Yes.
Now I'm trying to remember for myself. When we do those personnel, do you want to state that she stepped out?
Board Member Pearlberg has stepped out at 6:15.
Just to refresh my memory, when we're approving those, do we have now a separate section for increased pay? One, because when we get the personnel actions, I mean, there's just-
Right.
-so many things. Is there a separate section that we put in there for pay increases now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just trying to recall.
You're right, it's usually a very big-
You'll see them as stipends.
Yes, that, that they are seg-, because the personnel, some of the personnel action items that we have, I mean, they, there can be tons. So what I was asking was, is for the stipends or additional pay, those are demarcated differently? So that when we're just flipping through it, because we obviously cannot analyze every single, every single line.
And I had asked that question too. What would the procedure be for that very reason? We won't know. So even if it's just highlighted, we may not know additional stipends. So will we be notified if they are actually in that particular board book packet? Because there's so many stipends that come through. We're not going to know which ones are additional that we're actually going to approve.
Well, any of them brought to you as addition to their, to their contract.
Because otherwise, we wouldn't be able to-
They are. They are.
Okay, but there seems to be, and this is what caused the problem, was that there are-
That's actually not what happened in the other districts. The, the board didn't-
Approve it.
It was not on an agenda for them to miss. They were not-
Right, but they were approving stipends for other employees.
They didn't approve them.
They didn't approve any for-
No, the problem was that they didn't approve them. They were not on an agenda that they approved.
Well, there may have been, in the, in the first case, it came to light last, as well, there were. I'm sure coaches' stipends, coaches' supplemental pay were on board agendas.
They weren't.
But special assignments that were given out by the superintendent and then paid for were not.
Right.
But that's what I'm asking for, is to be notified, I guess, when there's special, something special than just the routine that we normally do, so that we can differentiate between something that's special and something that's-
We're obligated to give, to give you all of them.
Correct.
And that's why they're, they're, they're listed. When you, when you look at the employee compensation actions on tonight's agenda, the first, first one is Desarment High School Assistant Coach. Next one, Coronado Assistant Track. And then you go down Laguna Tutor during and after school. It tells what it is, what it is for. And then actually, and in your copy, it actually gives the amount as well.
Well, the stipends though, I don't know if there are any, are there stipends on tonight's one?
Yes.
But how are they?
Page nine.
Page nine.
Well, page nine of this.
Page nine of the public, you have a different copy.
I'm looking at the public document.
Okay. As long as the stipends are demarcated, I guess what, but I think what the board president is asking for is whether we should have a, some sort of policy or just custom procedure for certain specific like administrators who seem to be caught a lot for this. I don't know, I don't know why.
But that would be listed, you see, this is listed by-
Right.
Certified, classified, and administrative, if there were.
Correct. But I, I think the board president's just asking whether there should be a separate notification. That's all that she's just asking.
Just a notification.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I guess I don't, I don't understand because I think we're giving you everything that's there.
Well, but the point is taken is that we're not in the operational side, so we don't know. So to us, they just all look kind of alike. And if there is something that's out of the routine or just to be notified, that's all.
Jed, don't you have a category?
What I'm looking at right now, I apologize, but I mean, it literally says stipend.
We have the reasoning, yeah, what it's being-
And the employee and, yeah.
And what it's for.
And it tells what it's for.
Right.
The unit assignment.
The unit assignment, the name of the employee. I don't see a dollar amount, I mean, this version.
You have that on your follow-up to that, the stages of follow-up.
It could be, okay.
Board Vice President Beckman.
So what I think you are saying is the stipends look like they're usual and customary stipends. And that if there's something that is not usual and customary, that you have something. And I don't know how they would differentiate that. But, and all of them respond, my question was a little like that. Is, is there going, there's no threshold then? Every stipend that is going to be in here is going to be on an award agenda for board people?
Yeah.
Okay. So even down to $50?
$3.
Yep, it's going to be in here.
Do you want to talk salary schedule?
The distinction I'm asking about is you also approve a salary schedule.
Right.
Right.
So that continuing teachers, you don't see, every year, they, they get approved the first year with the salary and then they, their schedules don't, their increases in the schedule don't come back every year. Is that correct, Jed?
That's correct.
I have another question that is kind of like this. It may not belong in here.
Okay.
But where would we, would we ever approve if a certain position gets a change in levels and therefore would get an increase in salary?
That will be in?
That's in, in the salary schedules that you have tonight. Any changes that have been made in the last year will be reflected in those boxes.
Okay, so if you have position X and it is now a level N and it changes now to where the range of pay can go up.
Right.
Will be approving that change in position? Okay.
That's the next action item with the salary schedule?
Yes.
Okay, well, wait, do you mean specific instances where someone's, because we don't approve pay grade changes. If someone's reclassified with their pay amount, if the dollar amount stays the same, but they're bumped up to a new level, we don't approve that.
Not at the time, but it would be when the salary, when you-
When the dollar amount.
The salary schedule.
When the-
Yeah. Change of, change of positions into a new category, that would be in the new salary.
Except if somebody transfers and then does show up there because they transferred actual positions and that could be a different level with a different pay.
As opposed to it just in upgrade.
Right. So, well, that's what I'm saying. So if I, if I take person A and I, and I bump them from pay level C to D, we would never, that would never come to us until their actual dollar amount pay were increased. I think, because the point-
If that bump stayed within it, because sometimes the range, as many times-
Right.
Have, have, have some areas in.
Right.
So they're, they stay at the same pay rate, but their, but their range has changed. And that will come at the, and when the salary schedules, because it will show which groups, which employee groups are in the ranges.
I'd make a proposal that going forward, if we have any of those, those should be singled out and shared with the board.
Yeah, I think that, because I think that is, I think that's what we're trying to get at. It's that there, that, because, you know, it, I mean, I guess it makes sense because all of a sudden, someone's, in theory, eligible for a higher pay than they were at the time we approved it for the following year. So that might be, that might just be something we add, toss in there if that is doable in this form.
Yeah, we think, we think it is and that's, that's part of the corrections intending to make.
And as far as the employee is concerned, they will have this contract, which will have their base salary on it. And then they will get, if they do have any supplemental pay, let's say they're a coach, they're going to have an addendum to that. And then let's say then they're the track coach, they're going to have another addendum. So the employee could have two, three, four addendums with different supplemental pays with the period and whatnot. What we're approving today is these contracts, how they look.
Right, the form of the contracts, not the dollar amounts, not the supplemental pay, not in these. pay, not in these.
And part of the reason for approving today is because they are going to be used very shortly.
Teachers are going to go out this week.
Teachers, March 5th is the goal.
Two days.
Okay, so we did that language in all of the contracts for which it applied. We have also, last year, we had in the teacher contract regarding the calendar as approved by the board. Wait, I just, look, and see, we have 15 business days in the actual contract for the teachers to approve. I'm having trouble with finding this language today, but, did I pass it?
Yeah. The day, the dates, is that it?
No, that's the liquidated damages, which is the same as it was last year. But we added language last year to the teacher contract regarding the calendar as approved by the board, and we recommend adding that language to the administrator contracts as well, for the same reason, so that people know what the work calendar is. Another item that we addressed in the administrator contracts that was not there before is we added to the addenda the appropriate benefits, including accrual of leave, getting to one here, special service providers. Here's a classified administrator. So for instance, there it is. The contract year for employees shall be in accordance with the official calendar adopted by the governing board, so we recommend adding that to everyone's contract. Yes.
For the, for the calendar, is that, we have one adopted already for next year. If we change it, what happens? If we, if they sign this and then we change it, what happens? If any employees, I mean, for, not just teachers, but what happens if we then change it on them?
We would need to look at the number of workdays that were approved in the previous one, see if that number of workdays had changed, because you can change around some things that might not affect that. If it changes, I think we would owe the employees additional pay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just want to clarify, though, for some reason, we don't have, I want to clarify that, you know, they are contracted to teach 180 days, and if for some reason, you know, it hasn't happened yet, I don't think that we've had a snow day, but I grew up someplace where there were snow days, and you had to make the days up later.
We have red for red.
So, well, I'll stick with snow days.
Yes, we learned a lot of lessons.
So there is a, make, there is, I don't want to use the word imply, but it is in the contract that.
Yes. There is a specific provision that if we have to close for an emergency or something like that, that we will have to make it up.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I just make a note, because she kind of slipped on my backside here, that Board Member Pearlberg is back, and she rejoined us.
Oh, of course, welcome back. Okay, so, for the addenda for the administrators, we added the applicable accrual of vacation, if it applied, in this case, for 12-month classified administrators earning 16 days of general leave for fiscal year. Here's where Lindy, who's very helpful, she gave me the correct accrual per day and the correct pay periods for each of those classifications. So we added those to the addenda for the administrators, so that it was clear what they were, what they're entitled to accrue. Other than that, we've just changed the, you know, the year to the 2021, and I'll take any further questions you might have about these recommended changes.
Any other questions?
I'll say another word.
We'll move on to.
Do I have a motion?
Do I have a motion to approve Action Item 6D, Approval of Employee Contract Forms is Presented. Board Member Pearlberg moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes five to zero. We'll move on to Action, thank you very much. We'll move on to Action Item 6D, Approval of the 2020-21 Employee Salary Schedules for Issuance of Contracts. Dr. Krieger.
Thank you, President Beckham, members of the board. This was actually part of the CFO's presentation the last couple of years that I have been here, and this year, for various reasons, Dr. Bowman has taken over this, so don't know what that will be, how that will work in the future, but Dr. Bowman has worked hard on the salary schedules so that they reflect our recommendations to you, and I'll let him take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Krieger, Madam President, governing board members, Sandra. I can't do justice to this like Mr. Gad can, so I'll do my best, and please feel free to ask questions as I'm going, and apologize for my voice, like many others in our district, I have something of an upper respiratory something going on. The first one is, we are proposing for salary schedules a 5% increase to all of our employee groups. It's not a 5% to each cell, they're going to look slightly different. It is a total of 5%, and I'll try to explain the difference here. In this case, for the certified staff and the nurses' salary schedule, it's a 3% adjustment to the scale itself, so taking the bottom and the top and moving it 3%. And then within there, we have what are called steps, or sliding across, and that would be a 2% increase for returning staff, so a total of 5%. The reason for the separation and not just doing 5% blanket is because we have about 350 employees that are at the very first step, and then when we hire next year, then they make the same amount as the new hires, and that tends to be an issue for our returning staff. We hear a lot of noise about that every year. So what we're trying to do is have a separation between our first-year workers and our new employees. So that's the primary reason for why it's different. Just, and you'll see that where we have the ability to slide within a range like that, we've recommended that, and where we don't have that, we're just recommending a total movement of 5%. So I'll explain each of those as we get to them. So in addition to that, it says a step to the bottom, so really, the scale, on the top is our base salary, and on the bottom is our maximum, so the bottom is adding to the maximum, so that we can make sure everybody gets 5%. So I don't, you have a copy of your salary schedule somewhere in your packet, I don't have one right here in front of me. And you can see the change in the starting pay from 43,400 to 44,702, and what we're trying to do with all of our folks that have had a year of experience, and the minimum wage continues to go up required by statute, and it compresses our schedule, because that's why we've had to adjust that. And next year, we're going up as well, and we're recommending that we start that to begin the school year and not make an adjustment mid-year. I think that's important for our classified folks, that we're grateful that we have, and we want to be able to do that as we start the year and not make a mid-year adjustment. Administrative salaries, much like the other ones, it's an adjustment to the scale. We did a lot of work last year, and with, and I have deep gratitude, again, to the board, to put us more in a competitive favor with some of our neighbors, and we want to move, continue to move our scale as much as we can, but we also have to do a little bit of sliding within the scale, so that we can get some separation from our new hires versus those folks who have been here. And then we have supplemental salary schedule, we're proposing a 5% increase to that. That's on top of, two years ago, an 8% increase. Last year, it was a step increase of 7%, and this year, a 5%. So that matches that 20% increase that we've been, that we've given our certified and classifieds, closer to that classified staff over the last three years, and that matches the 2020 initiative of our governor. So really excited about that. As we looked into that part of it, that was frozen for, it seems like forever. So being able to make that 20% increase over a three-year period of time is also just phenomenal. And then in addition to that, we have no change to our athletic workers, certified hourly before and after-school programs, and certified tutoring core subjects, so those are, those will remain the same. And this has been a big one, and again, I inherited the benefit of the decisions you made when I came here, and I really appreciate it. Well, I do, and we're proposing, again, to continue a 5% increase to our subs. We continue to, we need to do everything that we can to attract subs and to honor our guest staff members as they come in, and compensation does matter, and we still are having some issues at some of our sites, and we think this will help some, but it won't completely solve that problem. And I'm not going to go over all the schedules. You have those in your packets, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowman.
Do I have a motion to approve Action Item 6D is presented?
So moved.
Board Member Kravitz moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vice President Beckman, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Move on to Action Item 6E, Approval of the Wide-Area Network Upgrade for the District. Dr. Krieger.
Debbie Spalding, this is another major project that, being funded by the bond, and helping move us, continue to move us into the current century.
Thank you, President Beckham, members of the board, Dr. Krieger and Sandra, thank you for letting me talk about this item. Currently, well, first off, a wide-area network is the connections between our district network operations center, which is at the warehouse, and to all the remote sites. And currently, our connection speeds range between 100 megabits per second and 1 gig. To all the school sites, we have 1 gig. And what this proposal does is it takes us to 10 gigs, so it multiplies our current bandwidth by 10, which will give us enough bandwidth to be able to keep up with the growth of the usage of our network. As we bring more and more devices on, and more and more of our classroom resources are focused on internet-based sites, we need more and more bandwidth. So we're building that out, we, this plan is to build that out, to put 10 gigs across. We ended up choosing to go with our current provider, which is Cox Communications or Cox Business, because they came up with the best proposal. We had five vendors reply with 21 different options of all sorts of different ways to build this network, and Cox's gave us a couple great things. They gave us the ability to build out our network quickly to that 10 gig. Most likely, we'll be able to have it in place by July 1, so that'll help us with not only schools starting, but also keeping our billing consistent and our contracts consistent. And then also, they have a resilient option. So what happens is, do you guys want to pull that up for me?
Resilient?
Oh, there it is, okay. They got it.
Resilient, thank you. Tonight is resilient.
So what they're building for us, and we already have built, is they're building a ring, thank you, a ring around the district. They're building a ring that all school sites connect to, and so if we have an outage in our ring, for instance, let's say that gets cut here, the traffic can route the other direction. So if we have any kind of outage, we still can keep our network up and running between all the sites. The other big thing about this proposal is it's saving us money. So we are increasing our bandwidth tenfold, and we are decreasing our monthly fees from approximately $43,000 a month down to $13,000 to $30 a month. So that's huge, and it's because our ring was already built out, the last phase when they implemented the 1 gig, and so all we're doing is having to change a few pieces of equipment around the network. So that's a huge win for us, and so that takes over, let's see, a year? Over a year, that is 361,608 savings a year, and $1.8 million over the five-year term. Half of that is E-rate funded, and the other half is ours, so we'll save $900,000 doing that, and also not be an M and O. So that's a big savings.
That is, that's fantastic. Any questions? Board Member Kravitz.
Well, in the past, when we, and I don't speak tech, so, excuse me, when we've upgraded some of our sites, there would be weak areas, so that some of our teachers couldn't connect well, or they didn't have good connections. So how, how do we avoid that with this?
Okay, this is connecting us to the actual school itself. From the school itself, I'll be coming back in a few months to talk about local area network upgrades.
Okay.
So at the schools, from the place where we demarcate at the school to the actual closets in each classroom building, that's only 1 gig, and so we're going to come back with a proposal to bring that up to 10 gig also, which will increase the bandwidth on-site, because a lot of the traffic that you have at a campus actually stays on-site.
Right.
You know, all your printing, going to your files, all that stuff is on-site, and so we do need the bandwidth there as well.
Okay.
Then another thing also is access points.
Okay.
Which is the Wi-Fi access, and we increased that over the last three years. It used to be that we had one access point in every other room, and those could only hold up to 20 connections, and now we have one in every single room, and they can hold well over 30. They say 60, but that's iffy. So we've increased that as well, so people should be having less issues, and if they are having issues, they should notify us so that we can come figure out why.
Yeah, no, I don't know, I just remember when there was an initial.
Yeah, just over the last three years.
I don't know that that's still occurring.
Yeah, over the last three years, we put new access points up for the Wi-Fi, we put in all-new network equipment at the school sites, and now we're going to the actual connections, physical connections between the equipment. But first, we had to get the new equipment, because the old equipment couldn't have sustained this project. So baby steps.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Spalding. Okay, do I have a motion to approve Action Item 6E, Approval of Wide-Area Network Upgrade for the District?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Greenberg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Beckman, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. I move to adjourn this special meeting of SUST Governing Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This special meeting of the Governing Board is adjourned at 6:45 PM.